Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Cleveland Heights University Heights City Schools District Board of Education Work Session for Tuesday, the fifteenth of March, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Gaynor, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Serini.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
First up, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Is there any discussion about the consent agenda?
No, I guess I do have one comment I'd like to make, and I would just like to say that I thank the staff members who have signed up to work for summer camp. It's great that we have summer programs, but we couldn't do it without our staff. And I want to thank them as well as the ones who've signed on to be on I E T teams over the summer.
Yes, I agree. We need to make sure that we're well-staffed for Tiger Camp. Anything else? No. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Next, I would like a motion to consider the approval of memorandum of understanding with the Cleveland Heights Teachers Union Local seven ninety-five extending the collective bargaining agreement through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
I motion that we consider the memorandum of understanding between the district and seven ninety-five.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Discussion. I would like to be the first to say how happy I am that we have come to this agreement in a amicable manner that avoids going through the bargaining process and that allows us to continue working seamlessly for the next three years.
I'd like to thank everybody who was involved in the negotiations, and I'm thrilled that we are at this point. And thank you, Malia, and thank you, Liz, and thank you, Karen Rigo. Thank you, Tiffany Underhile. I think you guys did a really nice job, and I'm very pleased.
Well, I'm also thankful that we were able to come to an agreement, and I know those discussions were difficult. Can we just look at the financials of this real quick? And in some of this, we have, we talked about when we were looking at what we could afford, but I'm looking for some confirmation about stretching the levy, the four years that we had discussed doing. And I just sort of like want to hear confirmation that based on the financial with the way they are today, that if we approve this, we are still able to stretch this levy, this last levy, without having to put another levy on the ballot.
That's correct. So based on the financial statements that you have in your packet as part of the consent agenda today, in the five-year forecast, which is for the month of March, you'll see that there is a positive cash balance through fiscal year twenty twenty-six. And that includes the settlement that was arrived at with the teachers that are a part that is a part of that five-year forecast. So you're absolutely right. The five-year levy cycle that the board indicated that you desire to have is, at this point, unless something ridiculous happens, you're good. It is absolutely doable.
And also looking for confirmation that when you sort of look at what other districts who have gone to the negotiation table, knowing that we have E S R money available to us, how those negotiations have netted out. I know, was it Richmond Heights had a six percent, six point, what?
Euclid.
Two point five?
Euclid, I think.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry. That was Euclid. Euclid, sorry. Euclid. I'm having a really hard time hearing. I don't know if we can just maybe talk closer to the, we just have the microphones closer. I know that's been a trick. But we know when we're comparing this, these raises compared to what other districts are getting, we're sort of in the middle of the pack. And that's sort of, I'm looking for that confirmation right now.
Yes.
That is my understanding, certainly.
Yeah, I mean, based on the, based on the survey data that we have, that is accurate. So, you know, although we don't know all the pieces and parts of all settlements, we do see the cost of living increases that are in surrounding districts, and that is accurate. We're absolutely in line with those.
Well, I know we see language issues that generally cost districts more when they go to negotiate, and this is a pretty simple memorandum of understanding with limited of almost no language changes, which I think is good for the time being.
Absolutely.
So.
I'm also happy it's a three-year contract because we've not had a three-year contract since, at least I've been on the board, so.
For a while.
And I think that's really, really important. It provides stability for our districts, stability for our staff, stability for our families. So I am very thrilled that we have a three-year contract.
Yeah, I have to agree with Jody. I'm glad we were able to settle with the three-year contract, and I want to thank Malia, and Superintendent Kurt, and Scott for their efforts.
Yeah, I, I'm also just absolutely thrilled that we were able to do this in the manner that we were able to do it in. I think that it has been important to all of us to do everything within our power to change the tone of negotiations, even so far as to propose a change in the actual method of negotiations. And what I think was accomplished here is perhaps a step toward that. I mean, this is the outcome of a very different process than the one that we, that we used two years ago, certainly, and it was a much more collaborative process. I think that this is a result of discussions about common interests and about, you know, helping to get an important document created and, and built in such a way that everybody involved feels good about it and that puts the district in a good position for the next three years. Relieving the institutional burden of negotiations for three years is a real win on, on all sides. It's an incredible burden for the locals to go into negotiations as well. This is not just an institutional burden on, on the district's part. It is an incredible commitment to the members of the unions, union leadership to, to commit to negotiations. It's an awful lot of work. So I say a genuine thank you to all of those who participated in the discussions, the formal discussions, and to all of those who were whispering into the ears of those who were participating in those discussions. The folks who were giving guidance, who were giving ideas. When negotiations works best, it is an incredibly creative process. And, and I say a giant bravo to everybody involved. And, and a real thank you to all of those who are dedicating their careers to this, this district, and most importantly, to our schools. It means a great deal that we have come to this place in the manner that we have come to it, and it is my sincerest hope that the method through which we arrived at this agreement will be just the first, the next step in really a new generation of, of, of working together in order to kind of bring this district to where we all know that it can go. And, you know, there's just so much great work that we do every day and that I think we're going to continue to do. So, thank you, thank you. I wholeheartedly and enthusiastically support this M O U.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. And I just got a note from IT. Could everyone double-check that your mics are and speakers are muted as we roll here? So, Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
And now, on a related note, I would like to consider the approval of a memorandum of understanding with the monitors unit extending their collective bargaining agreement through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. And similarly, this was a negotiation with Karen Rigo to come to agreement without going through a whole collective bargaining process. Do I have a motion?
I motion that we consider the, to consider the memorandum of understanding with the monitors unit.
Second.
Any further discussion besides the fact that all of the same applies?
Everything I said before.
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Okay, I have to flail around because I think I have a microphone problem here. Next, Ms. Kirby.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members. We are excited to be able to share with you the results of the communications audit that was conducted for our district by the National School Public Relations Association. If you recall, almost three years ago when I started, one of the goals for my first year was to engage in a communications audit so we can take a soup-to-nuts look at all the systems that we have around communication, both externally but also internally as well. And then we had the world changed a little bit about six months into, into my beginning in the superintendent position, and so we weren't able to engage in this as quickly as possible. But I am excited that we were able to come back to this process of looking at our communication systems, and we had a really great experience with ENSSRA, which is the abbreviated National School Public Relations Association. We also know that we are within the launch of a strategic plan, and so it really makes sense to have this information as we are looking at other systems and processes that we want to improve or build upon to, to reach our goals. So I'm excited to have Tim Carroll from the National School Public Relations Association, who led this process, prepared this report, and will be sharing the results of his report with us this evening. So, Tim, I do believe I see you on virtually. Hello?
Can the board hear me?
I'm going to turn it over.
Okay, good. Perfect.
Yep, we can hear you. So I'm going to turn it over to you so you can begin our presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, board, and Dr. Kirby for just supporting the communications audit in general. It always has to come from the top, and, and we appreciate the time that you spent back at the beginning of this year. I spoke to most of you on the phone or virtually. And also, I can't thank Kathan and her staff enough. There's an awful lot of work that goes into conducting an audit, which happens before I ever get online, and they spent a good part of the summer probably collecting and gathering data, so we appreciate all the work that they did as well. So I have a PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to push a button, and hopefully we're going to magically go to that place, and we'll see what we get here in just a second.
Tim, can you increase your volume a little bit? We can't hear you as well.
Yes, well, I'm not sure I can increase my volume, but I can increase my voice. How's that? Is that better for you?
That's much better. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes. Okay, so can you see the PowerPoint presentation I have in front of me?
No, not yet.
All right. I apologize. I thought we had it there. Share entire screen. There we go. And then, how about now? Can we see the PowerPoint right now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So I'm going to run through this material here, which is a summary. This, what you're looking at here will be a summary of the report, about a sixty-five-page report that I presented to Dr. Kirby and, and staff back in, just before Christmas, I guess. And so this is going to be a summary of that. I'd be glad to answer some questions after, but this kind of give you a general idea of that. I think the board has already seen the thicker report as well. So at the risk of not talking too much, I'm Tim Carroll, you know that, and so I'm not going to move too long there. Communications audit was a comprehensive assessment of all the efforts that the school district had going on at any given time. So the whole idea of that is take a snapshot of what's happening at that time. And I, I think even in the short time since I was there, and I was there in September, things have changed, people's attitudes have changed, COVID has changed, and so, you know, all the dynamics changed. So this is a snapshot. It's not a, a long-term study, and so we need to take that into consideration, especially on some things that may have changed since I visited. But it does give good baseline research, and as Dr. Kirby said, I think it'd be a real good lead-in for you for your strategic plan. First thing that I did was conduct a review of all the district materials. I looked at all the print and digital publications, the policies related to communications, campaigns that bond, your bond campaigns from the past, also looked at media coverage, do a lot of online, just searching. One of the things that I've always done with the audits is to pretend that I'm a, just a visitor to your school district and know nothing and just see what I can find. You know, I might be wanting to move to Cleveland Heights, and let me just see what I can find out about your schools as a total stranger, and that's kind of a lens that I use at times to see how outside people who don't know much about the school district gather information. So the next step in that process was to meet with focus groups, and I'm disappointed that I didn't get to come up and meet with people in person. And I really do think it's a better process when we're all sitting around a table and having more conversation, but regardless, under the circumstances, it worked great. And so September fifteenth, the twentieth, and the twenty-second of last fall, we conducted online interviews. We had ten focus groups, and those focus groups, these are the categories of the focus groups that we had at that time. We had business leaders and a lot of your different staffing groups. Also had the opportunity to speak with teachers, both elementary and secondary teachers, and some students as well, mostly some, a few secondary students mostly. In addition to that, but not part of the formal report, I spoke with Dr. Kirby, spoke with five of the board education members, spoke at length with Kathan numerous times over the fall, but especially when they first started. And also, independent of that, I spoke with the communications department staff. So that kind of gives you a picture of who I spoke with and how that worked. So there's some common themes that come through when, after talking to all those people and assembling all those notes and finding what's common threads, so to speak. So these are what I call the stakeholders' perceptions of C H U H, not of the communications department, but of the district itself. The most common thing I heard was the strength of the district is in the quality of the teachers, that they felt that the teachers, the experience of the teachers, a lot of teachers that have a long-term relationship with the school district, and the quality of this education there is one of the big strengths of C H U H. Also, diversity was a point that a lot of different groups hit on, both parents, teachers, and administrators, that the diversity of the school district is a plus and is something that should be celebrated. Some of the things that participants were particularly proud of for the school district they mentioned were performing arts, fine arts, a variety of cross, course offerings for students, and then a lot of the specialized programs that you offer, particularly at secondary level, such as A P, International Baccalaureate I B, STEM, C T, those kind of programs. And so people were proud of those, and they're very aware of those, even though some of them weren't high school people. People knew that those are the kind of things that the high school's offering. Some of the challenges that came out, which would probably be no surprise to the board, one was the challenge of a divided community, where you have some families engaged in the schools and have others who are attending schools outside of C H U H, but yet they're still your residents and still your taxpayers. And so that's one of the challenges. You've got two different groups of parents within the same community. Another challenge is you have facing competition from private charter schools that doesn't occur everywhere in the country, but in an awful lot of the urban areas around the country, there's charter schools and, and private schools as well, that obviously presents a challenge to your school district in a lot of different ways. And one of the other big challenges, of course, is maintaining quality programs with the current finance and Ed Choice voucher system. What little I've learned about the finance system and Ed Choice, mostly from your administrators, is that the school district really does have a challenge because of those two systems. And while I certainly can't offer advice on how to fix that, it does factor into communications and perceptions that people have. The last thing is just the label or the grade from the state report system. It came up in numerous conversations, the state, some people come, came up with it as a, it's not fair, and it's not, it's not a good system. Other people just used it as this is what we have and what we have to work with. And so regardless, it was a topic of conversation in numerous groups. Now, we also asked people specifically to tell us about the communications department, or, I'm sorry, not the department, to tell us about C H U H communications in general and how they perceived it. And so these are some of the things that came out of those conversations. They felt the school district was good at telling their story, did a good job of telling the district finance story and how taxes are spent, and I would agree with that. I may get into that later, but the, the way you outline your budget and your, your financial information on the website is very good, the videos that accompany that and everything. If I'm the kind of person that wants that information, it's readily accessible and transparent. I think that's a real compliment because that's not always the case in school districts. Survey, there was a survey conducted, and the survey said a majority of parents felt communication was adequate. They didn't ask people to say whether it was fantastic or poor, but was it poor, you know, but adequate is where it fell, and that's, that's okay. Seventy-eight percent is actually a pretty good number for that. There's always going to be people who feel it because they didn't get certain communications. There's something wrong with the system, and it's not always the case, of course. Parents and community members also felt that emergency communications processes were good. So particularly your parents, when I spoke with them, said if a school closes for a storm or a gas leak or whatever the kind of things that cause emergencies in schools, they felt that the school district did a good job of getting the word out to them and letting them know right away, whether it was through your mass communication system or through the campuses themselves. And the last thing, overall, your parents especially felt you were doing a good job of keeping people informed, that the information was there. Comment I heard several times is the information is there if you want it, and I think that was said with a little bit of sarcasm, maybe, where some people felt, that others say the information's never there, but in reality, it's there if you want it. And one of the things we'll try to help people do is to find it. So. Some other themes from communications, then. There were a lot of comments that felt the district misses the opportunity to spread the word, that they feel that the image of the district could be softened a little bit by getting more positive news out about the district. Community perception of C H U H needs help falls into that, and this was, these are comments from parents and staff members. Communications challenge is real or perceived split in the community, and its image suffers as a result. And some of that comes from comments in the media, comments online, maybe some of the people who are providing private schooling for parents in the community and things like that. And then the last challenge, which was mentioned from Dr. Kirby on down to parents and a lot of other people, was there's frequently misinformation in social media, and that presents a challenge to the school district trying to ignore or to correct or challenge information that is just not accurate about C H U H. The last thing is parents asked for more information, particularly related to COVID decisions. Hopefully, that, that whole issue is waning, but they just felt that decisions were made, but they weren't party to why those decisions were made and, or, you know. And so I think that, you know, of course, we have to take the context of I was interviewing these parents the second week of school, second or third week of school, and a lot of COVID decisions were made right at the beginning of school because, as we all know, things changed once again just as schools opened. And so I think in the context, if I did the same thing today, I don't think we'd get those same results on that last question. In addition to that, we also looked at how people view Board of Education meetings. We talked to internal communications. We looked at the website, leadership, and students and things. So I'm going to tell you a little bit more about those conversations in just a little bit. So, so my observations as the auditor representing Ensser, the School Public Relations Association, I say with no, no regret at all, the Board of Education are strongly supporters of the schools, and a good understanding of district challenges and expectations for communications. And I, I say that because I've frequently worked with school boards, or school board members will make comments like, we need some billboards, or we just got some advertising, we get the good word out about our schools, or we need to spend some more money on marketing. And it's so much deeper than that in my conversations, individual conversations or group conversations with, with all of you. conversations or group conversations with all of you, you got it. And you have a much better understanding of that. And that certainly will help as you look at long-range communications planning for the district. I appreciate that. Communications director, Kathan, I know she's there. Hey, Kathan. Has the experience and respect to manage the program. There's no question about that. She understands the community, is a big supporter, maybe your biggest supporter, and positively impacts communications program. And that's not a surprise to you, I hope, but it certainly is something you should be proud of. And the last thing is the quality and the output of the communications department staff is good for a district the size of CHUH. There's always inclination to say, I wish we did this, or I wish we could do more or less. But in reality, the size of your district and the size of your staff, you're putting out a lot of content in a lot of different areas. And so in that regard, doing a good job, certainly wouldn't expect more in volume. So maybe we adjust what we're doing. Communications, so some of the other observations, communications activities need to have a little bit more strategic purpose. It would be better to align those more with the school district and the board goals. If you take the board and district goals, which you know, of course, but are also outlined in this report, and you line them up to the actual activities that the district communications department is doing, there comes a time when they need to be graduated and adjusted a little bit, so they line up together a little bit better. You'll see that theme in a couple of other areas as well. The district should look at the current communication staff organization and budget expenditures. I'm not, I'm not positioned to recommend any new staff members, and that's not what I'm saying, but you might look at how the staff is appropriated right now and rethink that. And some of that's mentioned in the report, but there are some things, I think, that the way the staff is spread out right now and the way the staff assignments are, there might be a way to just kind of reshuffle the deck with the same staff. And in the future, look at budget expenditures, but that's not, my recommendation isn't to spend more money at the moment. Then the communications department should be looking at communications work projects and prioritize those activities and projects that support the district goals. One of the things that happens, and I was a school communications person for 40 years, so I'm very familiar with this, you get projects and activities that become yours, you know, the pet projects or just things that are important to you in the school district, but they kind of stretch over time and they need to be adjusted or maybe even just dropped. An example would be like printed annual report, which I probably did for 30 years. So finally, we just let it go and went to an online publication. But it required a whole lot of work. We got rid of that. It opened up a lot of space. That's one of the things I'm talking about, is there might be some things communications department could drop or rework so that they could add some new things in. So the flow of communication with the central office of the campuses needs to be evaluated. There's a lot of comments from the teachers, both the elementary and the secondary teachers. But I also heard similar theme, but not quite from the same angle, from your principals as well, that there seems to be a communication problem sometimes, either central office to the campuses, if we'd known this earlier type of thing, or teachers and support staff saying, we need to know this before this or that. And I'm not in a position to say whether they're accurate or not, but even the fact that there's perception that communication doesn't flow properly is enough to at least mark it on the paper. And I do think the school district would probably want to conduct some more research on why parents are choosing private schools over CHUH. So if you have students attending private schools or charter schools, but they're still your taxpayers and still residents in the community, it wouldn't hurt to try to have a dialogue with some of those folks. I mean, obviously, it's not the easiest conversation to have with some of them and just find out what's really going on, what is it, what is it that we can do possibly to regain your trust and bring your students back into CHUH? And that's not a simple question, but it's something I think that, I didn't get any research or any information on that at all from looking at the current situation. And the district could use and benefit from a unified message or a formal marketing strategy. And certainly, the first thing to go into is not a marketing plan, but eventually, CHUH needs to kind of decide what its story is, what they're all about. And a marketing strategy of some kind would benefit, would benefit that. That would all tie into the communications planning. So. What I'd like to do now is go into, oh, we have one more, I'm sorry. Internal communications, internal communications seemed a little bit fractured, and I do think that one of the things would benefit internal communications, be more focused on that and not to assume external communications and internal communications are the same thing. And not that the people are assuming that, but a lot of communications that are sent out are sent out to everybody, sent out to the teachers, sent it out to the parents. And obviously, everybody needs to be informed, but sometimes those teacher or the staff communications need to be adjusted and maybe have more information in them or separate information to keep people up to date on what's happening before the parents do. And we talk more about that in a minute too with the recommendations. So there are nine recommendations that came out of this. I'll go through some of them. Some of them I'll just mention, and we won't go into great detail with them, but I'll be glad to answer any questions, of course. First one is that the school district communications department should develop a comprehensive communications plan that lines up with your strategic plan for the school district. And that plan, we provided some sample plans, but that plan should guide what the communications activities are. And so at the end of a year, it shouldn't just be, what did we accomplish in communications, but it should be, how did the communications department further the goals of the school district, whether it's the instruction of children or community relations, there's a lot of different areas you have in there. The plan should also employ proven PR principles, which we provide, but they're all available online as well. And then it really should not be created solely by the communications staff, and that's a mistake that I see made sometimes where the task like this is just give it back to communications, just do a plan and give it to us. It really does need to involve some other people, especially some administrative buy-in, because it's going to involve activities and work by the administrative team. And so the whole administrative team needs to kind of be involved in that, even though inevitably it's going to be written and packaged by the communications department. The second recommendation is to make internal communications and employ engagement a priority. That doesn't mean that it's not a priority now, but it needs to, it needs some more. Congratulations on the memo of understanding that you just passed. I think it fits right into this next step. So one of the things clearly define the communications role of all the employees. So as employees come into the district, as they become either new employees or as the administrators are trained, I think it's very important that people understand that communications at all levels is important. And there's got to be some training and some a little bit broader understanding of how communications works in CHUH. Establish communications expectations for administrators. I found comments from different principals, not principals, I'm sorry, different teachers, both elementary and secondary. And some felt their campus administrators were on it and were very helpful and informative, and others not so much. And there's some inconsistency, I guess would be the way to say it. And I think that it's important that the top administration established down, whoever their, people report to them, that communications will be an expectation, not just something they do when they have time. And obviously, it needs to be realistic, the expectations. But I think that if it's not from the top-down communication, sometimes it's pushed aside for more important things, even if it's just COVID communications or other things that are just so important, everything's important in the schools. I think there needs to be a consistent process for releasing key information to employees. I think even, I think the administration admitted this, I don't know if admitted is the right word, but spoke about this as well. But part of this is related, again, in context of COVID. So some of this is related to schools opening, closing, and opening late and things like that. And so I think that this may be a different comment now than it would have been when we first talked to people back in early September. I think there, an employee orientation program, you already have an employee orientation program, which is actually pretty good. I think adjusting that a little bit more and putting more of a communications and recognition spin on it, which would be beneficial both to the staff and to the administration, I think would be a good choice. And there's information in this book on ideas and ways that might be done. Communications handbook can be very simple. It doesn't have to be a big printed spiral binder, but there are, when I spoke with staff members especially, and secretaries and nurses and different groups, everybody had a different idea on how they get information from the district or how they communicate up through the district. And a communications handbook might bring some consistency to that if everybody had kind of a guidebook or a map on the way things go. And in this circumstances is how we're going to do this and that. Gives everybody kind of a guide to follow. There are procedures for gathering employee input, but they're not consistent. From what I could tell, if they are, then I apologize. But from what I could tell in talking to staff members at least, was if they had ideas or they had things they wanted people to know, sometimes they worked their way up, sometimes they didn't. And I don't think the suggestion was it was intentionally not done. I think the suggestion was there's not a formal process for that. And so there are some recommendations as to ways that you might look at in the future. This is a tough area, because no matter how big your organizations or how small, if an employee, a group or an employee of any kind feels that the information they're getting is not enough, usually that relates to the decision that was made, was not, not the decision that they were in favor of. And so you have to, you know, walk that line of making sure everybody understands the process and has an opportunity to give input, but it doesn't mean that everybody gets the vote. And that's, that depends on the circumstances, of course. I think some things that could be added would be even more opportunities to celebrate employee contributions and successes. I think there's, of course, there's some great things going on in your school district with teachers. I didn't see as much as I probably could as far as celebrating some of the things that teachers are doing. We're just focusing, sometimes we focus on the teachers of the year or the teacher that wins the math award or something like that. But there could be a fourth grade teacher that's been there for 15 years, that is an excellent teacher, has taught every single kid for times tables for, and everybody's on it and thinks is a great teacher, but they don't get the recognition because they didn't apply for teacher of the year or something like that. So I think an effort to go out and reach out and recognize those people probably from the administrative level down would be helpful. And there's some ideas in there for that. And then this, I mentioned this earlier, to review the targeted audience for the weekly update, so that the employees maybe get more information or get a little bit more detailed information than the community, not hiding anything from the community, but adding more detail or more things that are relevant for employees on the front end. The last thing is to increase opportunities for face-to-face communications. I think that COVID hasn't helped anybody in a lot of ways, but it certainly hasn't helped face-to-face communications. And so I think this is something that Dr. Kirby and Kathan mentioned to me at the time, that this is certainly a high priority of theirs once the cloud was lifted, so to speak. And so I don't think that this is a problem as much as it's something that people are looking forward to getting out on the campuses and literally face-to-face talking to teachers and staff more than we all have in the past. So recommendation number three, and I'll go through these and we'll go back, and I'm glad to answer any questions, is become more strategic in reaching the external audiences as well. And there's a couple of things we recommend here. One would be to adopt a public engagement strategy to create dialogue and build trust around student achievement. One of the things that I observed in looking at all of your materials, your website and all your print materials and everything, was there wasn't as much focus on student learning and student achievement. There was a focus on student accomplishments and there's focus on successes, and, but there wasn't as much actually on students learning, teachers teaching type of thing. And I know that sounds kind of bland, but that's something that somebody from outside or somebody's looking at the school district wants to see. They want to see teachers teaching and kids learning, and they want to see those kind of curriculum activities taking place. But a lot of the successes and a lot of the celebrations are fine arts, sports, special events and things like that. And so it's not as easy to have a public engagement meeting and talk about student achievement or talk about test scores or something like that. But those are the kind of things that start bringing people around a little bit to think more about the big picture, what school districts are all about. Dr. Kirby has every, I'm not going to speak for her, but I know that she told me even back in September that it was her intention to get out more of the community and to the campuses, and she probably already is. But the, once again, you know, the things are changing, hopefully for the better, and we'll open things up for that. Key communicator network, there's a, there's an internal and external process we use in a lot of school districts, I've had in my school district where I worked for many years, where you find key people in the community and staff and keep them kind of hyper-informed. They get a little bit special treatment, not really VIPs in the true sense, but they get information. And that could include anybody from ministers to hairdressers to anybody who talks to a lot of other people. And it's a way to connect with parts of the community that the school district may not hit on a regular basis, especially if they don't have children in the schools. And some of the people I spoke with in my focus groups would be great people for key communicators network, very vocal, very loyal to the schools and have something to say. And so key communicator network only meets once a year. They don't have a big formal, it's not a decision-making body, but it really is a great concept and is a good way to reach out to people in the community and keep them very informed of what's happening in the schools. We have a leadership program in many school districts that I've seen. Leadership Heights, I made that name up, but Leadership Heights program would be something where the school administration and the school board, or the school board could sponsor it, where they invite people that are interested in learning more about the schools would go for maybe a year or six months, once a month. So they come in once a month for a couple hours, they give a tour of different campuses, they would experience anything from a cafeteria to some of the things that are happening in elementary schools, they get to visit with the finance director and communications and learn a whole lot about the schools. We've always tried to do this in preparation of school board filing date. So we have people who are interested in running for school board, who always felt that any candidates would be better informed if they went through the program. And it's an idea that works pretty well in some communities as far as, obviously, you can't require somebody to go through a program like this, throw up for school board, but if it works well, it becomes kind of a standard that you were in the school board academy kind of thing. So this could work very well for your school district, I think, and where you're at. There's lots of other things that can be done, community outreach activities, tours, volunteers. And I say that, I know you're doing tours and volunteers now, but bringing some sort of formal process, so there's more of that going on. A formal thank a teacher program from graduates, definitely an outreach to senior citizens. It wasn't, you don't have as large of senior communities in some other districts, but you've certainly got enough. And I think that there are some things that could be done to try to tie them back into the schools, especially since a lot of the seniors that live in your community attended your schools or the children attended your schools. So number four, we mentioned marketing, and I'm not going to go through the steps in marketing, this is, this is the marketing page. But all of these lead you to the same place, which is some kind of conscious effort to market the school district and first decide how you're known, what it is you're very good at. And the school district's good at a lot of things, but all I got when I spoke to people was, you know, we have a great fine arts program, we've had a lot of success in sports, we do this, we do that. But no one could put their finger on, if I said to them, what is it that CHUH is known for? If I was going to come to school here, what is it? And I think that's the question that every administrator at least should have on the tip of their tongue in the elevator speech kind of thing. They should know that. And so a marketing focus of some kind would help, I think, in that regard, and try to get people thinking that way and bring them together. Points of pride is a whole idea of taking all the successes in the schools, all the schools, and bringing them together in one place and packaging, repackaging them in a different way, so you can look and see things that have happened in the school. Micro campaigns is focusing on very specific things. It's not on the whole district, but on maybe we're going to focus on reading, we're going to focus on diversity, we're going to focus on, it doesn't matter what, but very small, maybe video, social media type of thing. I'm not sure what the school district's current relationship is with the Realtors in the area, but I think that there can never be enough communication between your area Board of Realtors or your local Realtors and the school district. And so once some of these efforts are in place, I think that an outreach program to Realtors and bringing them in and giving them more access to the schools and then trying to get them to understand what's really happening at CHUH can only benefit the schools. There's an onboarding process for families. You actually have great information on the website for people that are moving into the community. But I think there's another area that a marketing emphasis could be thrown in there as well, not just, here's the forums and here's the information you need. And then obviously, looking at first impressions of campuses and programs, you know, you meaning the school district, looking at what you have, drive-by, I would call it, drive-by is the wrong term, but you know, when you drive by a campus, what do you see? Does it look like it should look? Does it look like people would expect the school to look like and is it cared for? And it's surprising how often people form impressions of a school inside, just strictly on the visual appearance on the outside, which is unfortunate, but it's not that uncommon. There's a, excuse me, there's a need for a crisis plan for the communications department. The school district itself actually has an excellent communications plan already, so this would not replace anything. What this does is it takes it one step lower and would take Kathan's staff, it would identify what it is that each of the people in that staff would be responsible for in the case of a crisis. So if you had a hurricane or a tornado or something like that, a serious event of some kind, who goes where? You go to the site, I stay with the media, you go to the central office and answer the phone. In other words, who does what? And every single person in that department should know what to do in that circumstance. And it's not that hard to create this kind of plan. It's hard to anticipate what can happen, but it fits right into the school district's communications plan. It tells everybody what they need to do. So I won't go into detail on that one too much, but it's something that's missing in the puzzle that would not be hard to place in there. We're talking about the digital engagement, we're talking about the website and social media. There needs to be a little bit more of a purpose to the social media. media. There needs to be a little bit more of a purpose to the social media. We call integrated social media strategy. So you have Facebook and you have Twitter and you have Instagram. Things are being posted. There's, there's plenty of content, but the question sometimes is, are, is there a purpose to the content other than there's content? And so if you're posting the same three things on all three platforms with no real changes just to make sure everybody has that information, sometimes that's necessary. But other times you want to look and see what is it that people are on Instagram are looking for? What is it that people on Facebook are looking for? And change that message or change the visuals or whatever needs to be done. And then try to tie that into your goals. If your goal, for example, is to focus on elementary education or kindergarten, let's say your focus is on kindergarten and early childhood education, then social media strategy should also focus on that on a regular basis and hit those same topics and themes. Video is being used right now. You actually have some excellent videos that have been done. I think some of those are being done on the outside by a video production company and that, that should continue. But there's also opportunities to do small, one-minute videos, short videos. The technology is there now to use, literally to use an iPhone and a microphone and, and create good content, good school-related content. And so that's something I think that communications department could start looking at and buy some equipment if necessary and, and work towards that. One-minute videos actually get very high, very high viewership. If you did a one-minute, if you did a one-minute at the Heights type video every day or every week and posted those, you'd be surprised how often people latch on to those, the same way we all do when we go online on social media. There's a purpose for that. The mobile app that the school district has, a lot of school districts around the country, including the one I was retired from recently, struggle with the mobile app because most of us have stopped using our mobile app for these kind of purposes. Once the websites became responsive and once we had the ability to just set up our phones any way we want, we don't need the mobile app as much. But since there is an mobile app, it should be used with mobile users in mind. And so it probably needs to be the kind of information that on a click I would want. I want the school calendar, I want the menus, I want, I'll think about what a parent, because most of the mobile app use is going to come from parents. I want the calendar, I want this, you know, whatever, the bus routes, whatever it is that they want quickly on there. It doesn't have to have everything that's on the website, but it should have the information that a thumb, thumb click away, two clicks to get you to anywhere. And a mobile app's tough, you know, there's no reason to not have one. The cost is very minimal, but it's hard to make them engaging anymore because people are still used to going to social media instead. One of the things that the district could do more, I think, is to monitor other social media sites that operate under the name. We frequently, and this has happened to me all the time as a communications director, I had actually a really good-looking, you know, social media presence on all of our district communications. And then I'd find a campus that hadn't changed their Facebook page in six months, or I'd find a website that literally had Halloween decorations on it from, in May or something like that. And so, you know, it requires you'd actually go back and just monitor all of those other sites on a regular basis and use a little bit of strong arm if necessary to keep people up to date. And it's usually okay for most, but there are just some people that just either don't get it or they just choose to not, and it needs to become more of a priority because there are some sites that just are stale, would be a nice way to say it. And then, of course, you want to target specific audiences with a, with an e-newsletter of some kind. You want to somehow come in and some people need e-newsletters, other people don't want an e-newsletter, they just want a text message or something like that. So you use that sparingly. But the newsletter itself can't be just a printed document that's turned into an e-newsletter. It should be a whole separate thing. I put a recommendation in there in the report for a new, there's 10, 10 or 15 companies to provide really cool, for lack of a better word, designs. And it requires the same amount of work. You put in the same content, it just packages it differently. And that's what people are used to now. We're all used to seeing those kind of newsletters. So there's no reason to use an old-style newsletter for that. Do something new and splashy in there and the cost is very minimal for, for those kinds of products. Recommendation number seven, the website. I won't go into all the details on the website. You actually have a very thorough website. There's a lot of good information. It's not always easy to find the basic facts, but I think once people have been there and know what they want to find, they go there. The first impression that I get from going to it though is it's kind of static. And I've looked at it again today. And one of the things that happens is you've got visuals on the front of the website that are constantly changing, the, the big visuals, and they're all announcements. I think eight of the 10 slides today are announcements, which are necessary. You need those announcements in there. But it doesn't really send, and it doesn't send a message to everybody when they look at it. You don't see kids learning, teachers teaching, you know, those kind of things. What you see is an announcement that says X and then another announcement, another announcement. And people are impatient. They usually don't sit and watch and scroll through those announcements. And so I think you need a mix of those plus a mix of something a little bit more visual, a little bit more exciting. On the same theme, campus pages, including the Heights High School page, need, need some work. I think they're, they're very static. And I think there's, it's hard to get campuses to take that on. And it's hard for communications department to monitor, to actually manage other people's pages. And so that's something that needs some consideration. But it is, it is an issue because a lot of people will go, for example, if I have a high schooler, I'm not going to go to the CHUH page at all. I'm going to go right to the Heights website. And if those pages aren't moving and, and they're, they're static and there's nothing changes on them at all, then I start getting the impression that nobody's running them at all, even though we know there's new information on there. They look the same. One of the things that I've noticed was a lot of the information that shows up on website and other social media feeds is Twitter feeds. Twitter feeds are basically repeated in other places and that just becomes redundant. It's something that we always mark when we do audits. We look for that because it's good, it looks good to put a Twitter feed on the front of your website or put a Twitter feed in Instagram or something like that. But in reality, it's redundant because somebody who's using a phone or an iPad to access, that's, you know, access that website, also probably has Twitter right on the same website. And so on the same iPad. I think there could be an FAQ section in an easier place to find on the school district's website. I think just you could, or you could all come up with 10 or 12 or 15 questions that most people want right off the bat. And then if they do nothing else, they can click on that and get the information they need. And then long-term, the district should probably look at redesigning for more contemporary look. I know it's been redone in recent years, so there's no reason to jump right into that because it takes a couple of years to do that. But there, there's a lot more contemporary website designs out there, including ones within the framework of the company that you work with. But once you've got the, a little bit extra budget money for that and some time, it'd be worth to take a look at that. I mentioned Board of Education. Had a good conversation with, with many of you and a couple of recommendations I have. I think the, the website could have a more visible point to the Board of Education. I mean, the Board of Education is on there and obviously there's a lot of information on there. Actually, it's all there if you look for it. But I think that somebody who wants to go to a Board of Education meeting or, or connect online, or somebody wants to know what action the board took, for example, the, the big action tonight with the bargaining units, then I think that there should be a very quick way to get there from the front of the website. It's just, to me, it's, it's important because you represent the community essentially. And so there should be a way for them to get that information quickly and not click two or three places to find that. So it's there, it just needs to be a little bit more visible. I put this down to promote and archive the board meeting summaries. There's actually a very good summary of all of your, all of your video, all your meetings on video are there already, which is great. One of the things that I would recommend is to send out some sort of one-page summary of board action, not the board minutes, but just a, did you know what happened last night kind of thing. And we, we did this for many years, a lot of school districts do. And just, did you know kind of thing. And the staff like it because the staff get a quick synopsis of what action was taken. And if there's any kind of, you know, reports that relate to the community or something, we'll put those in there. We, we did not do work sessions. We only did general board meetings. But it is a good idea to try to get a board summary. Then you can click on that. If you don't want to watch the meeting or read the minutes, you can just say, what happened at the board meeting last night? Click. Did they pass this? Did they pass that? And they just have seven or eight, 10 lines, or 10 paragraphs, rather. As I mentioned with the administration, I mentioned with Dr. Kirby and then also the board, just more opportunities to get out into the public. And I'm sure as elected officials, you feel that way as well. So I'm not going to speak more about this. It's, it's been a tough year for everybody, a tough two years. But there is a lot of opportunity. There are a lot of opportunities for the board to get out and dialogue with different people in the community and to help communications strictly by going out and talking about the schools. One of the things we mentioned earlier was the idea of a school board academy. You could either have a separate, we had the program I was talking about, which is Leadership Heights, which is more of a leadership program, but you could have a separate school board academy. So that could just be a one-day, half-day function where people who plan to run for school board or plan, or thinking of filing for school board would come in January. I don't know your, your board filing schedule, but let's say they come in January on a Saturday morning or something. And they gave, basically got a crash course in, in election laws, which is very helpful. A little bit about school finance, a little bit about the way schools work. And usually that's hosted by the school board president or a school board member that, or two that come and kind of welcome people and explain how this thing works. This is how schools work. Because we find sometimes that people run for school board and really don't have information on how schools work. And there's kind of almost an intimidation of, I don't want to ask because I know this or that. School Board Academy is kind of a good, safe way to get through that in a, in a couple of hours. And it's a really good way to get the election information in people's hands, which seems to be the most important thing. Final recommendation is create more opportunities to engage with longtime residents and alumni. When I say that, I say senior citizens, but that's a fluid term these days. But just, you've got a lot of people in your community that don't have children in school. They may not be senior citizens anymore. Their kids may be in college or they just may be empty nesters. But there's any opportunity to get all those people in some sort of dialogue, and I don't just mean meetings, but just engage a little bit in schools can be beneficial. One is, I think there could be a better formal history of the school district. The school district's been around a long time. People love old pictures. They love history. And I know there's a lot of history of the school district around, but it's somebody collecting it and gathering it, whether this be a project for some students or be a project for communications or someone else, but some, or the, or the foundation, but somebody to take this on and, and really formalize the history of the school district, start to current and recognizing some of the names from the past and some have been. But every school district should have a formal history of some kind. And creating connections with empty nesters. There's, there's different ways to do that. Obviously, one of the ways is through activities of some kind that, of course, through, you know, fine arts and athletics and things like that. But there are other opportunities, whether there's a parenting, you know, college seminars or parent, parent university and different things like that. So I do think that one of the things that you could, well, let me just go to the next thing here. One of the things that could be done would be to host a, what we call a legacy day. We used to call it an old-timers' day, some of the ones we did, but where you would, you bring people together in a very informal fashion on a weekend to celebrate something historical, whether it's the anniversary of the school district or anniversary of the high school or something. But the idea being that you invite parents back and maybe those parents didn't go to your schools, but their children did. And so it's a way to get parents and older parents and their kids who are now probably in their 20s or 30s to come back to the school to celebrate something. And it's a real nice PR type of thing. Doesn't require any agenda. There's no big formal program, but it costs you some cake and punch, but it can also score a lot of public relations points or something like that. So as we look at the considerations for implementing some of the recommendations that I had, and again, the recommendation's so much more detailed than, than the document, I think it's important to understand that what can be achieved by the staff alone is going to require a lot of support and also time. And I think that's the most important thing. Unlike a financial audit, there's no violations here. There's nothing that needs to be done right away. It's best to lay this plan out and, and look at it and say, what do we want to tackle this year or next year? But when Enspur does these audits, they look at this as a three- to five-year process. They'd not look at it as a, you need to fix these things next fall kind of thing. So I, I understand that, but sometimes there's an inclination to just kind of jump on some of these things. So in the long-term, I think some of the components can come into place when the budget, the resources or staff allow. But other things, we have existing programs that may not be feasible, as I just said, for more than a couple of years. So I think the important thing to know is that there's lots of opportunity and projects in here. There's no expectation everything would be done, really between Dr. Kirby and her staff, to decide what path they want to follow with this. But I do think that there's a lot of good ideas and recommendations that could be used to enhance the communications program. I do think that there's a lot of great things going on already. So this isn't a suggestion of, you know, throw that out and let's start again kind of thing. And we get to the point of questions, or if we want to pass it on, the National School PR Association is obviously there as well, but I'm, I'm here to answer questions right now.
Kathan actually is going to.
I can find my way back online here. Here we are.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tim. I know Kathan, our director of Communications, is going to kind of respond to some of the recommendations. So I'll turn it over to Kathan and then we'll have a larger conversation with questions.
I can't hear anybody. Somebody, if somebody's speaking to me, I apologize. I can't hear.
We're waiting for Kathan to, I think she has a presentation. Or do you just want to speak, Kathan? Maybe she can't hear us. Kathan, are you there?
I am.
Okay.
Now I can hear you. I couldn't hear you either.
So Kathan, are you going to present something or should we just go with questions?
I was going to let the board ask their questions first.
Okay, okay.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
Hey, Malia, can I begin?
Please do.
Tim, and even Kathan in, in your department, this is an outstanding piece of work. The, the document that was presented to us a couple of weeks ago with the full recommendations was amazingly detailed and I thought amazingly accurate. And it didn't necessarily sugarcoat some of the challenges that we have. I mean, I think you, you saw strengths and weaknesses and threats and the, the whole bit laid out. There's just really a lot of things, I mean, I, I think we almost need like, you know, maybe not, this is up to Malia, but an entire meeting with Kathan just to kind of go through some of these things. I know a lot of the things are in process. You know, I remember when I ran for school board and one of the things I kept on talking about is a late communications committee. And, you know, this was, we had other, you know, we had an outstanding communications person in Kathan's seat, just like Kathan is outstanding. But it, it just was something at the time that our superintendent didn't want to do. And I, I kind of like that idea where, you know, we live in a community where, you know, I got to think of the greater Cleveland area. We've got so many people that touch communications and PR that we can, that we can tap into. And, you know, not necessarily for critical feedback, but more for to get the word out. You know, the whole idea of this Leadership Heights and how we can bring more people in and wick it into, you know, getting outstanding candidates to, you know, run for school board in the end, but in the meantime, be involved. And I just, I just think that's just really a wonderful idea. I look at some of the new, I mean, in Cleveland Heights and, and Tim, we've, we've gone through, we've, we've cycled through kind of a new era of leadership at our city government in Cleveland Heights. And it's interesting seeing the new candidates after their meetings, you know, emailing their key communicators of all sort of the intricacies of the legislation that they're passing and, and their, and their change and, and the things that they've changed. I'd love to be able to do that as a board member, you know, but we just don't, we just don't have the time. And, you know, the commitment that, you know, we have just isn't as notable as what a council person does. But I just love a lot of the things and, and the things that you, that you spotted. I've, I've got a couple of things about CTE and how I think communications drop off when, when we graduate. But I'd love to hear what you guys have to say about this.
I agree with you, Jim, that there are many things in this report that would be incredibly helpful for educating members of the community about what's involved in being a school board member or just being in a leadership position of some sort around the schools. And we know historically that it's hard to get people to run for school board. And it's a big leap from, you know, various PTA activities when your child is younger to all of a sudden school board. You know, it's a huge chasm. And something like a School Board Academy would certainly have made my life a lot easier. So thank you, Mr. Carroll, for this. There's just a ton of really specific and useful recommendations here. And I think that, given the idea of a comprehensive communications plan, putting it into the framework of our strategic plan and that sort of timeframe of, you know, five or six years, I think makes it a little bit less daunting because you do have an awful lot of really good recommendations and it's not possible for anybody to implement them right away. So I'm grateful that you made that point about it being a long-term approach. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mr. Carroll for his work.
Beverly, can you move your mic closer, please?
I'd like to thank them for their work and the recommendations and Kathan as well. One of the things I do would like to point out, I made a couple of notes here, I think it's really important because we used to do that and considering that I'm a Cleveland Heights alum like years ago, always have the history and the timeline of Cleveland Heights, I think we should, we need to enhance that. And I like the fact of highlighting the high school. We need to just put more, maybe just have a page or more information to highlight the high school or, you know, the different schools, middle school, high school, but the high school as well. And the fact that we are, you know, don't just jump into making these changes. I think we should space it out, you know, just probably prioritize, see what's most important and do that, you know, budget allows that to, you know, enhance some of these things that we need to do.
I'd like to thank Mr. Carroll for this report. I think you did a really nice job. First of all, doing a communications audit is a pretty daunting task. There's a lot of information to go through, so thank you for taking the time. The two things that, you know, that I see as high priorities, you know, not that it's not all a high priority, but I do agree that something like this does take multiple years to implement. But I think the tying the communications plan to the strategic plan, I think, is the key thing. And the second thing is making the internal communications and the employee engagement a strategic priority. I think you hit it right on the, you know, the nail on the head, Tim, when you talked about how we seem to have a lot of communications that are externally focused and some of them are overlapping, but we really don't have anything that is specifically internal. I mean, I know we do have like an HR newsletter that I see occasionally. And it was interesting when you said that there was a note in the report about limited use of staff section of the district website. I can't see that section, so I'm not sure what's even there. But I, you know, for Kathan and the rest of the team, I think that would be interesting to see and to be able to see how we could maybe beef that up. And then I think that would also help us with, one of the things that, one of the recommendations was to take one of the publications and make it more of an internal one. And I thought that would be a great place for the healthcare committee to be able to regularly report out and keep the staff informed of, you know, ways to be better healthcare consumers, how to save money, things to think about, changes that are coming down the line just because, you know, whether it's something that changes in the plan or just, I think that that would be an excellent thing that we can do. And Mr. Carroll, another, I just want to thank you for all of the great examples, you know, when you, it's one thing to say, hey, do this. It's another thing to go find a good example of how somebody else has done it so you can go look at it. And I want to thank you for providing that as well because that was just like an extra touch that I think will be really, really helpful in the future. So thank you.
Yeah, I've got a few notes. So a couple of sort of direct questions, I think, to Mr. Carroll, just for your, since we have you here as a resource. When I look at your recommendations, you know, we have, Kathan is our communications director, background in communications, and does an excellent job with communications. When I think of marketing, I think of a somewhat different skill set. And I'm genuinely asking, is that a correct or incorrect understanding? Because I really think that the marketing piece that you've mentioned is a critical piece. And I want to make sure that we have, that as we lean into this more completely, is there, I want to make sure that we have the folks with all of the right skill sets doing that because I know that Kathan is very, very full with what she's doing now. So I'd like to hear your thoughts on that, Mr. Carroll.
I would agree. And I mentioned, I worked in communications for 40 years. I never had any marketing background myself. And I think to tackle a marketing plan, I would have taken someone else's marketing plan and inserted what I could into it and felt like that's as good as I can do. My recommendation, not knowing Kathan's background, but my recommendation is if you don't have a lot of marketing experience, is to have a communications committee to make sure you have at least one or two marketing people on that committee. I had one of your parents or business people who was, actually worked for a marketing firm, I don't remember the name, who had offered to, you know, have conversations about that. And it was obviously a strong point on her point as well. She was kind of like, you need marketing. But I think you draw in some people that have some background or contract with somebody to come in. And once you have a plan in place next year, contract somebody to come in and then develop a plan. No market, the advice I would have in that circumstance was I would not let anybody do a marketing or communications plan for my school district if I wasn't involved in it, you know? Because there are people, as you know, working in business, those come in and will do a plan for you, and here it is. And they misread the way schools work. They don't quite understand public education. So I think in the room, a marketing person is helpful, but I think it has to be done in concert with some pretty good communications people that understand how public schools work. So to answer your question, yes, it is not the same thing. And you can say you're doing marketing. I've done it myself and said, we're marketing now, but you're not really marketing, you're advertising or whatever. But have a very purposeful, like, we need a marketing plan. Really does take somebody that does that for a living to help push down that trail.
Thank you. And then also, am I reading, reading in between the lines with what you were saying correctly? And if the answer is yes, it's really okay. Should we dump the app? I mean, because.
Well, it's a good question. I tried to dump the app where I work, and I came to the conclusion, we don't need it. No one's using it. And we kept it anyway. So, you know, it's ironic, but I think that's exactly the kind of thing you do a survey on. You start doing, one of the suggestions in there was in the external communications is to do a communication survey and just ask parents, how do you get your information? You know, what do you really want? You know, and I think if parents come out and staff and they say, we really want this, this, and this, it's becoming much more of an instant communications thing. And the app, it's like a flip phone almost. I mean, it was cool. I remember we did it. We all were excited about it. And now we're literally like, you know, I see an app on the phone, and I have your app on my phone, and I've looked at it several times, but I don't, I don't go to apps very often myself, but I'm, you know, I just think that's, and younger people don't use apps at all like that, I think, anymore. The app used to replace the website because the website was not responsive, but everything's changed. So to answer your question, should you dump the app? I would say that's Kathan's decision. I don't think it's, there's no harm in having it if it works, but it's certainly not something I think that it should be a high priority if that's where your time's going.
Thank you. It just seems to me that as we talk about, you know, as I look big picture at what this, really the big piece says, it almost seems like we're, I was going to say we're going into a funnel, but we're really not. We're going into more of an hourglass. We're needing simultaneously to really focus, but we're also asking for an expansion. And that's why I really began with my question about marketing. Because, you know, I think that Kathan is doing so much, we do need to focus on what does the community use and value and redundancy doesn't, there's a place for redundancy, but there's also just too much. At the same time, we're really asking for more. So I think that that's two sides of the same conversation that we need to be careful about.
If there was a theme that, you know, not a marketing plan, but if there was a theme that came out of, you know, because I always try to find what is it I'm seeing or whatever, I really hope that CHUH, you know, focuses on, as I said, as corny as it sounds, on kids learning and teachers teaching. Because if you look at all your content and materials and your website and the print and everything else, you don't see that as quickly, you know? And we all get, I've done it too, you get caught up in the big stuff. But in reality, if I want to send my kids to the schools, I want to know what a classroom looks like. I want to know what teachers look like. I want to see a fourth grade kid sitting there doing science or something. And so I think that that, you know, that's not like a marketing plan, but that's something overlying that, a filter, let's call it a filter. That should be a filter for a lot of things is, are we really representing the teaching profession and the students? Because that's really the business we're all in. Among everything else we do, essentially, that's what it is. But we get so caught up in not just Kathan, but everybody, we all get caught up in all this stuff and just like school boards do. And so it's hard to go back and do that. So anyway, that's my proselytizing for the night, I guess. Sorry.
Thank you.
That I know that can be a challenge is that, you know, when we have so much in so many different mediums, you see something, you know, maybe you see it, it didn't catch your eye, you know, you kind of saw it, you didn't need it right then in that moment. But then when you do need it, where was it? And how do you go back to it? You know, for instance, and I'm just going to throw out because it came today, you know, the scheduling for parent-teacher conferences for the high school. Came out today, came in an email. You can't actually sign up until the 20th, so that's five days from now. So, and I'll have to remember, it came in that email, that's the information I need when on Sunday I go to sign up. So those are the kinds of things that I know that are also difficult and frustrating. And that's what I see sometimes on social media where somebody will say, you know, how do I do this? Or where was this information? I know I saw it, but I can't find it. And, you know, maybe in, you know, another one, picture day, you know, it was picture day. And somebody will say, well, picture day is on such and such day. Well, they're talking about their school. And maybe the person who asked, their kid goes to a different school. So, you know, maybe somebody from Canterbury is asking when picture day is, and somebody from Rux will answer, and then that adds to confusion. And then, you know, then somebody will say, oh, the school always gets it wrong. Well, no, somebody who was genuinely trying to help gave information, but it wasn't the right information for that person. So I know sometimes that can be really frustrating and a source of confusion. And sometimes it's, like I said, you just don't know where you saw it. You saw it in a moment, but when you need the information, trying to, you know, piece back where it came from and find it again can be really, really challenging.
And the reality is that we're all inundated with so much information coming from so many different sources, it's very difficult to keep track. So conceptually, then, you want to find a place to go back to find everything, right? So that would be the website. But then that means that everything's on the website, and it's too much, and it's overwhelming. And finding things on the website can be quite a challenge.
But it shouldn't be. I mean, because really, so there's the CHUH website. But if my son's at Monty, the overwhelming majority of information that I need should be on the Monty tab. And a big piece of the Monty tab is literally just going to be a calendar. And, you know, and then it's going to be FAQs, starting with the most commonly clicked FAQ this week. It really ought to be a sort of a constant scroll of what are people really clicking on? Or so it seems to me. You know, we also run into problems where, you know, there's 16, hey, there's girls' basketball tryouts are Thursday night, you know, robo calls. I mean, there's, there's a lot, a lot going on that I think we really need to, it needs to be about, as we keep saying, intentionality and being user-friendly.
Ironically, the parents, most of the parents say they prefer the robo calls. If you talk to them about anything, they'll turn around and say, don't send me anything, just send me, just call me. And it's just kind of funny because that, it goes against our nature to call people, but they like that convenience. And so it's just how it works.
I'd like to go back and sort of highlight one of the things Jody said about priorities because there's really a lot of things here. And, you know, I'm not a communications person. I don't want to pretend to be a communications person. I don't want to, you know, give someone like Kathan or a marketing person the wrong advice. But when I look at our HR communications, our building communications, and all the internal communications, it seems to me, I mean, this is one of the things that, you know, I think between the focus groups and Tim and just sort of some, just his work looking around, you know, that seems to be one particular issue that we could do better at. So, you know, I'd love to be able to suggest that, you know, if we're prioritizing these items, let's focus on that guy first. I know we want to do outbound marketing and trying to, you know, bring more students into our schools and external things, but, you know, that might be overkill right now when we can't solve our internal issues. So I'd love to be able to see a solution in place for that.
Me too.
And I think we have the right people on staff without having to spend any more money to make that happen. But I think that really is ultimately up to Liz and her team.
And I think that really some other future steps could, this could, as I think you were alluding to a little while ago, this would be a great retreat topic? About, just about the, about the rollout of this, next steps with this, takeaways from it, planning associated with it.
Well, there's things like on our shoulders that are pretty much outside of what our communications staff would do if we wanted to do like this Heights leadership thing. And how do we, how do we as a board communicate out to the public? Because we do rely a lot on, we rely entirely on district communications. So, you know, if we, if we actioned the item regarding the memorandum of understanding with 795 today, you know, how do we get that out? And how do we get that out within the realm of the Sunshine Laws?
One thing kind of to Dan's point about a retreat and just the process of taking this information.
Can you lean in, please?
So we're having this work session here. One of my next steps is to do a deep dive into this report, into this presentation with Cabinet so we can do that prioritization in terms of, you know, where to start first based on their experiences and the things that they're hearing as they engage. And you're correct, you know, over the past couple of weeks, we've had different departments send out, you know, newsletters with updates, perhaps taking that away how we can streamline, you know, or combine our efforts there, you know, and develop accounts in a cadence that makes sense so that staff are getting that information in a way that is comprehensive and aligned, right? So just as an example, I also think that the strategic plan in particular, because we'll be starting those road shows and rollouts, actually kicking off the first one tomorrow during State of Our Schools, where we'll show the e-version of the strategic plan, is an opportunity to speak to some of the recommendations here and for sure, you know, increase visibility and messaging, especially in a post-pandemic in particular. So those are just some of my initial reactions. I do think that it will take a pretty thoughtful work plan to kind of take these recommendations and over, you know, the next two to three years to identify what we want to work on when in particular. But, and so I appreciate both the resources and the examples, but also the recognition that you can't do all nine recommendations next year. That's really, really. recommendations next year. That's, that's really, really important to remember as relates to this process.
I would say if we do nothing else, every communication that gets sent out, I love the framework Tim has on page 18, where he says, for each initiative, your plan should answer the following questions. Who needs to know? What do they need to know? Why do they need to know it? When do they need to know it? How are we going to tell them? What action, if any, are we trying to encourage? And how will we evaluate and measure the outcomes? Every communication we do should follow that, or we should be able to answer those questions as we're putting it together. I mean, that, that sounds so simple, it's a lot harder than it is. But just keeping that in front of you and in mind every time that we do something, I think would help a lot. Particularly the, what action are we trying to encourage? I mean, that's, that's the call to action. What do you want someone to do as a result of getting this communication? Sometimes that's not clear. And I'm not saying that just for us. I mean, anytime you get a communication, whether it's from anyone, sometimes why you're getting it isn't clear. So, I mean, and that, that framework works for whether it's marketing communications, whether it's internal communications, you know. So I think that's beautiful, and I love the way you laid that out, Tim. It's just, it's so simple, but it's, it's perfect in its simplicity.
Any other questions or comments? Or, Kathan, would you want to kind of wrap us up here?
Yeah, absolutely. So first, I want to say thank you to Tim for conducting such a great and thorough audit report, not to sound like a broken record here from everyone else, but I really do appreciate you sharing your time and expertise and wisdom with us on that process. So, thank you for that. And I do also want to thank everyone who participated in the focus group this process, all taking time out of your busy schedules to do those and offering your thoughts was really important to this process. So I want to thank everyone who participated in that as well. So of course, my team and I are really excited about this report. And I just want to kind of quickly share just a few things that we've been working on this year, as well as a few things kind of on the horizon as it pertains to the recommendations. So I will share my screen here. So we are developing yearly calendars. We've been working on that all year for, as it pertains to important communications at various levels, so the district, elementary and middle school and high school levels. And of course, that is a component of the broader communications plan that is connected to both three of the district's strategic plan. And of course, we'll also be working our, the recommendations that were shared tonight from this audit into our overarching strategic communications plan. We began giving welcome packets to new families in the 21, 22 school year, and that really fits in nicely with the recommendation of having an onboarding process for families. And these same documents are available online as well on our Back to School page. One of the efforts this year in improving internal communications has been to utilize a tool that's new to us. It's called Thought Exchange. So we use that frequently in meetings to gather employee input. And we're always looking for more ways to utilize that tool. So it essentially scales conversations and helps us kind of determine how a group is thinking about a particular subject. In terms of outreach initiatives, this spring and summer, we are working on some plans to showcase, as Liz mentioned, our refreshed strategic communication, or I'm sorry, our refreshed strategic plan for the district, which is, of course, a component of the external engagement recommendations. And Tim kind of touched on this. We do have plans and processes in place for various groups kind of throughout the district and in terms of communications in the event of a crisis. But the crisis communications plan as a whole certainly does need some refinement and some fine tuning. So that's definitely a big priority for us in the short term. And then some kind of longer-term recommendations that have really popped out from the report, and you all have touched on this in your questions as well. So of course, continuing to research into why area families decide to go to non-public schools. So we do currently track this information from families who leave us, who were with us before and then leave for whatever reason. So we do track that information via an exit survey, but we definitely want some richer data as it pertains to the families who have never been in our district. We're exploring a couple of different things for our external communications. So we're looking at, are we invigorating our public as for all marketing campaign? You may remember that from several years ago, as well as a potential redesign of our website, chuh.org, that had its last redesign probably about three or four years ago. But as Tim mentioned, that is kind of a long process. And finally, and of course, last but not least, I know this had a lot of discussion, but definitely streamlining the internal communications to help our staff feel better, knowledgeable, and connected. So definitely more to come, but this audit report is definitely an exciting next step for our district communications program.
Well, thank you, Kathan, and thank you, Tim. We really enjoyed having you working with us in the district. And we really appreciate your decades of experience in this field. And we look forward to continuing to, to work with you as we start to work through these recommendations and process this work into a plan. So thank you very much. And thank you, board members, for your participation in this process and your feedback on these efforts, too. Very helpful and very needed for us.
Thank you, Dr. Kirby and the board. I'd be glad to help at any time people contact me. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just moving on to the next agenda item, we did share a communication last week that we will be moving to mask optional for the district starting on March 17th, which is this Thursday. That recommendation is based on a couple of things. One, we did have a reopening advisory committee meeting where we discussed it, we reviewed the data, we heard from our healthcare practitioners as well. We also have been reviewing, continue to review the data from the county. As of the last report, the COVID cases are at the level of 50 for every 100,000 residents. So that is very, very, very low. I actually spoke with someone from the Board of Health yesterday, and they indicated that for grades pre-K to 12, moving to mask optional is something that is in line with what they're seeing with the data. The reason why we did not move right away is because we did want to make sure we had enough time at the schools so that our staff could ready the students for that transition. You know, we've been in masks for a very long time. And we know that that's going to be something that could be very different, you know, for those students who do choose to not have a mask and for students who do choose to have a mask. We just want to make sure all of our climates are ready for that shift. And so we've been working with principals and staff on that in particular.
Can you mention any of those specific preparations?
Meetings with teachers, discussions with students in particular. One thing for sure, we want to make sure is that we don't have any kind of bullying or students being made fun of if they decide to, you know, keep their mask on in particular. So when we did our processing of this, we wanted to make sure we plotted off enough time for counselors to go in the classrooms, you know, do lessons, even if they're just short, kind of brief lessons, to take any kind of questions or concerns from parents, too, as well. And so that's why, again, for that time, not right away, but, you know, a little time for that.
Yeah, it's certainly a, a big change that would be hard to do just from one day to the next. So I understand the need to have a little bit of time to make sure that we can do it right. And I'm glad that you were able to do that.
Okay. Well, I'm really glad that you're looking at this from a thoughtful perspective. We have some families that have reached out to us that have been, well, just make the decision and don't wear masks. And then when you sort of engage in them and say, well, you know, we live in a community that is very divided when it comes to masks or not masks, and some feel safer wearing masks, and these kids are still going to wear masks because their parent's going to ask them to. And the kids, I don't want to think they're going to get bullied, but, I mean, I think, I'm afraid that, you know, someone is going to feel compelled to not wear a mask when their parents have asked them to wear one. And I think you need to set the tone where, which is what I presume is going on, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if you wear it or not wear it. It just means that this change in policy means you don't have to wear it. It's optional now. So I'm glad you're being thoughtful about this.
Yeah, and I credit my team for raising that, because frankly, I was ready to take, you know, go mask off a little quicker. But then they, but they pointed out the need at the school level to kind of manage those dynamics and to remember that, you know, it's going to be difficult, you know, for some students and some families. And we want to make sure we have time for that. I think another piece of, some questions I've received on the other end was, why don't you wait until after spring break to do it?
Liz, can you lean into your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Why don't you wait until after spring break to do it? Well, when we come back from spring break, we'll be going right into testing. And so we want to make sure before spring break that any kind of like transition, those challenges are worked out ahead of coming off of spring break into a new situation and experience. And now we're going into testing. So again...
Right, testing is its own carnivores.
That's another trend. So again, so there's a lot of, you know, kind of things you have to look at from a calendar and climate perspective when making, you know, these decisions.
I guess that, you know, my, my contribution to this discussion is, first of all, I support it. And I, I think that we as a board should consider formally recognizing that, you know, if we support it. But one of the concerns that I had, a real deep concern, is that, and I've lived this, because where I teach, we went back from winter break in a mask-optional environment. You know, we are, we're fundamentally flipping the notion of a mask, where for the past two years, we have been wearing masks, I've been wearing a mask to protect the people around me. You know, because COVID, one of the tricky little devils about COVID is that you can be asymptomatic. And so we're switching from that notion of wearing a mask to a notion about, you know, now I'm wearing a mask really to protect me and the people in, and the people at home. And the, the area that gave me the most concern is, A, the efficacy of masks in helping to protect the wearer, because that's not a discussion we've had a lot of in society over the past couple of years. And, and then B, about, related to that, is, you know, we are aware that we have immunocompromised students, and we have students going home to families who have immunocompromised family members. And, you know, this, this was really, as I'm sure it was all of, all of us, it was weighing heavily on me. And so I had a couple of conversations about this. One was during our return-to-school committee meeting, where we have the luxury of incredible guidance from a doc with Metro. Help me with her name.
Dr. Meyer.
Yes. And so I asked her the questions, two questions on this issue. Was, A, what do we know about the efficacy of mask-wearing now that we are sort of flipping the reasoning behind mask-wearing? And now that we're two years in, hopefully, we have some, some information. And the information that she, that she gave was basically, you know, certainly in encouraging folks to, those folks to lean into more of the N95 mask instead of the thinner or, you know, other masks. And, and so that was, there is some reassuring numbers behind that. So folks do have an opportunity to wear a mask that does have a, a good impact on reducing the wearer's likelihood of getting the disease. But then I also reached out to two of our community members who have immunocompromised family members, one of which is an immunocompromised student in the Heights schools, and one of, and the other one was a family who has students in the schools and a family member who is immunocompromised. And I was really reassured by both of these conversations, actually, that both of them are actually in support of us going to a mask-optional plan. And so, you know, this was a pretty big stumbling block for me, or obstacle for me, between me and supporting the notion of going mask-optional. And so, you know, looking at it from, A, receiving the information from Metro Health Doc, and B, having the opportunity to talk to these two families about their immunocompromised family members and how they felt about this change, I definitely do feel comfortable about making this change. I will also say my personal experience, now working in a school that has been mask-optional since January, you know, it's anecdotal, it's N of one, right? N of one school, but our numbers have not, not gone up. They continue to go down, actually.
Good to hear.
Well, I support this, just like I supported following the science when we decided to go with the masks.
Yes.
Because at that point, that's what the science was saying. And I think because of the case counts going down, which luckily, we're in an area where they have gone down, and it's such a low level of transmission and spread, that I think we follow the science and we can go mask-optional now.
Yep, absolutely. Now, we don't need to take action on this because when we approved your recommendation to return with masks for this school year, we also said, you make the changes as you see fit, as things change out there in the big wide world. So, you know, and of course, should something change again in the big bad world, then, you know, it might be necessary to go back to mandatory masks. We don't know. There's no way of knowing yet. And that will be, you know, it's obviously incumbent on you to keep track of what's going on, right? And to continue to follow the guidance that you're receiving from the scientists who do this for a living. So, thank you.
Can I, can I ask, Liz, I don't, I read the email, but can you remind me what the, where we are in terms of non-academic day, in terms of sporting events? And we've been limiting audience sizes. Has any, have any changes been made to that as well?
You know, we haven't, since, we haven't made those changes, but we certainly can now that we're low. I think as we were going low, we didn't necessarily have a lot of events that are out there. But this mask policy actually applies to everything, not just the schools. And we can also now follow the same, you know, we really want to get back to our, you know, our practices of pre-pandemic life, which include regular attendance to events and things that are coming up.
And it'll be the Tiger camps over the summer as well?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's great.
What about for board meetings?
Well, as of Thursday, I don't necessarily plan on wearing a mask for any board meetings after that, so.
And going back to Delisle?
We will be, we will be in Delisle.
Not, not Fort of Marymar.
Miramar, sorry.
That's why we just said that.
Yeah, okay.
We are moving back to Miramar for our April meeting, and we will be staying there pending any further whatevers, right? That is the goal here.
And will staff be attending in person?
We, we're going to be talking about that specifically. We'll be looking at the different topics and content of a board meeting to determine who's going to be coming to those meetings, because we know that we'll have some questions that will want to be answered right on the spot there. We will want those folks there in person for that.
And then are we going to start uncovering the water fountains and making those optional again? I mean, I don't want five years to go by in our water I mean, I don't want five years to go by and our water fountains are still turned off and nobody remembers why they were ever turned off. I mean, we know that's not how it was spreading.
I think what we can anticipate is first masks. The next thing we'll be looking at are barriers, you know, for example, because a barrier and a mask are about the same, but we don't want to rip the band-aid off all at one time. So, you know, looking at things like, you know, water fountains too as well. So, we will be transitioning off of, you know, so the numbers remain good. So masks are kind of just the first and that's really the biggest piece.
Right, we just need a thoughtful plan, and, you know, we need to be looking at all of the things that changed because of the pandemic, and when is the right time for each thing to get rolled back to the way it was? I mean, like I said, I just don't want to get into a world where, you know, suddenly we never turn the water fountains back on. I mean, or we always have these up and we don't, you know, 10 years from now, somebody's like, why do we have those? Oh, because they were put up back, I don't know. You know, I mean, that's the stuff that happens. And I just want to make sure that we are thoughtful about, you know, rolling back things as we can and when we should.
And thank you, Jody. I also did want to bring up, when it comes to mask wearing, I'm not the least bit concerned about, you know, bullying and that sort of thing when it comes to mask, to mask wearing. I'm very, very confident that our building level folks will be able to manage whatever comes in that way. But I do also think that it is important to say out loud that as a board member, it is not my expectation that our teachers will be keeping track of which of their students are expected by their parents to be wearing masks. This is up to the students. This is not up to our teachers to police this. It is just too much. It is too much to expect that a teacher is going to be able to monitor which of their third-period students are supposed to be wearing their masks. Moms, dads, this is about, you know, you letting your child know what your expectation is of them. This is not the teacher's responsibility to monitor this.
I agree, Dan. I mean, families have conversations about these things, and students know if this is something that's important for their family situation. And as long as the adults are communicating with the children and the children are, understand why it's important, then it should not involve the teachers at all. You know, it's the same reason parents have rules around lunch, or, you know, some children have allergies, or whatever. I mean, this is something that is then specific to each person's individual case and doesn't require policing on our behalf. But as you said, Liz, earlier, it is very important that there be understanding in classrooms and in buildings that these are choices that are made for the safety and health of individual students, and that there is no excuse for bad behavior as a result.
I have a question regarding volunteers and outside individuals that come into the building and work with our students. Do they have to show proof of vaccination?
No, we don't have a vaccination requirement right now. That concludes our mask update.
And the last topic we have is OSBA membership. I think I'm going to ask you to start that conversation, please, Scott.
Absolutely. So I received an email from Mark Bobo, who was from OSBA. You'll remember he was here, along with Rick Lewis. And he was asking what the status was on the board's decision as to whether or not we were going to join OSBA or not. And Dan had prompted me earlier to check into one specific item that they had mentioned, which was the savings that we get from the Workers' Comp program that we participate in through OSBA. And at that time, it appeared that we received that benefit whether we were in OSBA or OASBO because it was a joint program. But I did send something to Mr. Bobo to clarify that, because he came back in terms of asking about the timing of the board's decision and said that we needed to have a decision made by March 31st because they needed to notify Bureau of Workers' Compensation of the program whether or not we were participating or not. So I did clarify with both Rick Lewis and with Jim Rowan, who is the executive director of OASBO, whether or not we needed to participate in both or be a part of both organizations. And they both did confirm that we had to be both a member of OASBO and OSBA to take advantage of the Workers' Comp consortium that they provide.
So it's not an either/or?
It's not an either-or.
It's a both.
So I did mention to both of them, they may want to do a little something with their marketing in terms of how they present that on their website, because the indication is that you can be a member of either, but it is actually, you have to be a member of both. So that kind of prompted the conversation tonight, because again, we're working this deadline of March 31st in terms of whether or not we want to take advantage of OSBA's Workers' Comp program, or whether we want to shop it with another consortium. There are others in the state, so we could do that. But again, it kind of begged the question, is the board prepared to make the decision about that or not? So I just wanted to throw it out there.
What's the dollar amount? Is what, $97,000 annually?
Yes, so they've indicated in their, and we've not been able to confirm this in terms of a source document. I think what they probably do is do a per-head savings through the consortium. But they're suggesting that by being in the program, our estimated savings for the Bureau of Workers' Comp program for 2022 is $93,715.
So about $94,000 in savings.
Correct.
And our membership to OSBA costs, remind me, $15,000, $14,000?
Just over 15, yeah. $15,067.
So do you mind if I just sort of, for those folks who might, you know, be watching this in a couple of days, I think it's worth just recapping why we're having this discussion briefly. The Ohio School Boards Association has been a member of the National School Boards Association. And in, I want to say October, the National School Boards, the interim president of the National School Boards Association wrote a letter that was offensive to some and had, has inspired the Ohio School Boards Association to break ties with the National School Boards Association. This rash decision was upsetting to members of this board, and we invited two representatives of the Ohio School Boards Association to join us here, I believe, for our February meeting. And we shared the stage with our friends from the Shaker Heights Boards of Education who had similar reservations. Also, so they came here that night, I think it was probably not a very pleasant meeting for their two representatives. They left, then Malia and I separately. In addition to that meeting, we were invited to participate in a Zoom meeting with the Board of Trustees of the Ohio School Boards Association, which we did to express our reservations about their decision. I appreciated both of those gestures, the fact that the two gentlemen came here, and that after that, they invited us to participate in their trustees' meeting. My recommendation to my colleagues here is as disappointed as I am, and I am very disappointed in the Ohio School Board Association's decision to sever ties with NSBA. And I'm also disappointed with their movement toward being charter members in another alternative national organization. I will be voting in favor of maintaining our relationship, our membership, in the Ohio School Boards Association, and I do it with reluctance, but I do it because we get very good programming from Ohio School Boards Association. We get access to their trainings and conferences, et cetera. Also, we're looking at a net of $75,000 saving, and that's a big chunk of a teacher's salary.
Yeah.
So I do think, though, that we should, if we do, that we should let Mr. Lewis, the executive director, know that we expect him to hold true to his statement in support of us becoming more involved with membership on some of their committees. I expect him to hold to his word that he will, he will smooth our path to membership in some of Ohio's School Board Association committees, because perhaps that's where we can make, that we can help achieve the change in OSBA's policies that we would seek to leave. And if we left, we would have no voice in that whatsoever. That's my two cents.
Well, Dan, I agree with you. I mean, this is, you know, sometimes you have to hold your nose and vote yes for something, and this is, you know, it's happened before. This has got to happen for me tonight. I'm very disappointed in their action to, one, I think, form another competing national organization, which just dilutes everything. And I think it's being done for political, ideological purposes, when I don't think there needs, it just doesn't need to be. But there's still a great organization that provides a huge amount of fiscal value for us, which is evident in the savings we get for the Workers' Comp program. I mean, we could try to switch over to something. I've been part of that in businesses. It doesn't necessarily go smoothly. I mean, we've got a favored rate right now, so you join another one, and the rate isn't as favorable, and then you got to get a track record. I don't think, and then for any employee we have that's in the cups of getting, you know, a claim filed, it may alter that. I mean, I don't want to put us or employees through that. But I recognize the value. And I guess what I'd propose is, it would be ideal if, as part of this, you know, acceptance, we can have a letter that this board drafts to the leadership of the Ohio School Board Association, one, thanking them for coming to the meeting, but also calling them out on, hey, we have asked for membership for a few of these positions, and we would like to work with you. And, I mean, we can't say we expect to have one of our members to be part of a particular committee, but I think we can strongly, I think we can say that in a telephone call, but I do think it needs to be a soft ask that we would very much like to have consideration to be a part of some of these committees, that they said that we should be a part of anyways. And we've asked, but we've been denied.
Well, we have asked to be included in committees that are statewide, that are of particular interest to our board and our community. They have asked that we participate in the regional subsection, which is called, whatever it's called, I forget. It's not Northeast Ohio, it's North Ohio, something, which is obviously more limited in scope and-
And influence.
I'm sorry?
Scope and influence.
Yeah, and influence. So, you know, from their point of view, we need to march through the steps and go through, you know, the small potatoes stuff that might be of lesser interest to us before they grant us the things that we actually want to be on. And the question is, you know, how long are we willing to do that? And which of us has time to commit to being on the committee that they want us to be on before we can then be on the committee that we want to be on? So that's, you know, there's no sugar coating it. That's part of what's going on here. They need people in the regional committee, and we're not the only ones who are not participating in it, because there are other local districts who have also been asked to join the local committee and, or the regional committee. And obviously, people have different ideas about where they want to put their time. So that's something to keep in mind. I also agree that I don't want to cut off our nose to spite our face. I think we have made it quite clear to the leadership of OSBA what we object to, that they did to us what they complained that NSBA did to them, and that that is not really the appropriate way of solving that problem, but that's what they chose to do. And this new parallel national organization, who knows what it's going to provide in the way of educational opportunities for us? Beverly and I are both planning to attend the NSBA conference coming up in a couple of weeks. A, because our schedules allow it, which is hugely important, and B, because we derive tremendous value from attending those conferences, and I know that the rest of you would attend if you could. And so I've made a point of reminding the leadership of OSBA that attending that conference is important to us as a district. It's important to our community that we grow and learn and come back with the useful information that we learn at national conference. So, we're going.
Can I add that perhaps as part of this, we also sent a letter to the NSBA encouraging them to change their bylaws in such a way that would allow an individual district to join NSBA and have access to their programming if their state is not a member? Because it's just a matter of their by, it would be a change of their bylaws, that's all.
Yeah, but I think it's a little complicated. It has something to do with the way their charter was originally set up, but we can certainly ask. I don't know whether it's something that they can implement with any ease.
I would think that since, as Mr. Lewis pointed out when he was here, that, you know, 17 or so other states have already pulled out, it would behoove them to change their bylaws, even if it is complicated. You know, this is one of those issues that I've been incredibly frustrated with. I've gone back and forth, because there's times when I feel like, well, if we just knee-jerked reaction and pulled out, then we're hypocrites in doing the exact same thing that we're frustrated with OSBA for doing with NSBA. And I do think that there is value in trying to make change from within. I know that there has been a couple of things that we have pushed OSBA on, and we have actually seen them move in the direction because of our influence. And I'm worried that if we weren't there pushing on them, some of those things would dry up and go away, or they just-
Well, you, Jody, specifically pushed very hard for a plank on their platform.
Right.
What, was that two years ago?
Two years ago, yeah.
And that was super important and very effective.
Right, and those are the things that I-
We got 80% of the way there.
Yeah, I don't want to, you know, take our foot off the gas pedal on things like that. However, it is very frustrating for me to, you know, support an organization when some of the things that they're doing are really, really frustrating. But I think that if I vote for us to stay a member, that that's a commitment to continue pushing on them to make some of the changes that we want to see them make. pushing on them to make some of the changes that we want to see them make.
Yeah, I agree with you. Because I'm, I'm very disappointed and it's just so unfortunate that we have to play this political pain point with them, you know? And I appreciate you guys attending their exec meeting and I trust, you know, you and Malia's judgment. But, you know, it would be a reluctant vote for me, but I will vote because, you know, they have been, we do have resources that we can, that we have used through OSBA and they have been supported. But, you know, the way, the whole thing, the separation with OSBA and NSBA was just, you know, we were blindsided. It was ridiculous the way it happened. And, yeah, you know, like I said, I, I will vote to continue, but it would be a reluctant vote.
So Molly, do you need a motion?
I would like a motion, please.
I make a motion that we...
Jim, actually, you need to first, so the motion we need to make is actually to, because you tabled this. So we had a, a motion in second, in January. So you're, you're, you're going to make a motion to remove from the table the January 4th, '22 OSBA membership resolution. We need a second on that, then you'll vote. So it'll be removed, so it'll be back on the table. And then that, that resolution has already been motioned and seconded, so we just then need to vote on that one.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to remove the OSBA item that we tabled in January.
Second.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
All right, so it's back on the table. It's already been motioned and seconded, so it's...
So now we have a second call, a second roll call to vote to rejoin Ohio School Boards Association.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We'll submit the paperwork this week.
And perhaps you and I can work on drafting these letters together?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Because I don't trust myself to do it without your guidance. And if they're, oh, Liz, yes.
I have one more thing to say.
Please.
As we prepare to close out our meeting this evening, I do want to take a moment to remember a former colleague of ours who sadly passed away late last week. This notification just recently came out to the district this afternoon. Pat Christopherson was with our district for 28 years. She started in our district as a psychology aide and research assistant for 11 years and she was our registration coordinator for 17 years. She retired this past January and as you all know, Pat was very dedicated to the district, worked very hard coordinating all of our registration efforts and producing very important reports for us as relates, relates to enrollment. She also was charged with managing the Ed Choice Scholarship Program for a very long time too as well. She was a warm, sweet person, wonderful to meet, work with and meet with, wonderful to be around and, and continued to work for a very long time to support our district, very dedicated. So we just want to send our prayers out to Pat, to her family. They will be having some visitation this week and that's information that they did share in the district-wide communication. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to just pause and take a moment of silence in remembrance of Pat and her true commitment to Tiger Nation. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And now I would like a motion to adjourn.
Just a reminder, on State of the Schools tomorrow, does anybody want to talk about that?
Oh, goodness, you're right.
I guess I'll talk about it. So I want to remind everybody, it's our State of the Schools tomorrow here at 7:00 and you can watch it online or you can be in person.
And that's the robocall that went out this evening.
That I did, earlier this afternoon.
Right. Yeah. Okay, now I will entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
A motion will adjourn.
I second.
Any discussion? Mr. Gaynor?
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you and good night.